I will call the meeting to order at 6:19. We appreciate everybody's patience. We did not anticipate this being an issue. That being said, this, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for all on our district website at a later date. I believe you've already posted the last meeting.
Yes. Yep.
This was a massive file, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it's available and a link on the meeting minutes page to a district YouTube page.
In preparation for public comment, if you're going to make a public comment this evening, you can use the Q and A or the chat as part of this, this platform, or you can send an email to the superintendent address at superintendent@stgrsd.org. And same public comment rules apply as normal. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes dated March 24, 2020.
So moved.
Second, sorry.
We're going to do a roll call. Any questions on those meeting minutes? Okay, new roll call vote to accept those meeting minutes, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. More articles were emailed to you. Please take the time to sign them, scan them, send them back to Amy at your earliest convenience. Do we have any correspondence for this evening?
I do not at this time.
It's time for our first public comment. Again, if you're responding electronically, please state your name and your address, both in the email or in the chat. We'll give folks a few minutes to respond.
There is a question in the chat box. The Q and A box too? Oh, I take back the Q and A box, yes.
Yeah, there's a question in the Q and A box. We don't have an address, Chairman Hu.
Person that put that in there, please add their name and address for the record, please.
me to read the comment?
Sure.
Okay, um, I believe it's John Jones, it's Jones 166 Granby Road, Granville, Mass. Uh, the comment is, I've heard from a couple of teachers that before the COVID hiatus, the school system was only within a few points from being taken over by the state. Is this true? If so, is there a way to expedite that in an effort to improve our rating? And I believe that's all for the public comment, Chairman Hu. I have no email.
But I do think that needs to be addressed at some point.
It's not true.
Okay, wait a minute, um, Ms. Dutton tells me there's a comment chat. I have to find that. I'm sorry, Chairman Hu, I don't see the chat function on my screen.
Can I read it?
Yes, if, is there a name?
All right, it's from, yeah, it's from Dominica Nuni. She's at 42 Lakeview Street in Southwick. She says, is your agenda was not posted correctly in the link provided? Is there another place to find it, or can you scroll down so we can see the whole thing?
Maybe back, can you zoom backwards a little bit?
Just for the agenda?
Yeah, the folks can see the whole agenda on the screen.
Just minimize the size, maybe.
There, that's little. The, um, the agenda has the action items listed in them. So it's, it's not a one-page, it's no longer a one-page agenda.
Can I just post the link from the website? Or is that what was wrong? We have it ready to go.
Can you check the superintendent address to make sure there's no comments there? Okay. Okay, we will have one more public comment later in this meeting this evening. There are, there is no student advisory report this evening. Moving on to educational presentation, the first one up is super, Superintendent Waller on lead teacher job description.
Yes, so this is a new position in our district, and it was one that after the Director of Curriculum Instruction Jenny Sullivan and I met with every teacher in our district and asked them, you know, what type of feedback they wanted to give us, what supports did they need. One of the big issues, and it came up too, when we were doing our SOA plan, was some of the social emotional needs at Woodland School. And we have this job description from AGWAM, it's a model that they are currently using there, and this is a position that is not, it is still in the Unit A contract, it is a teacher position, and they only work the school year, but it is somebody who is the first line for when teachers are having a difficulty in the classroom with students. So this frees up our school adjustment counselors to really be that tier-two interventionist that they are, and so that they can meet with all the kids in the school and do their social emotional curriculum with all of our children. Right now, they're being pulled in lots of different directions, and the tier-one socially emotional education is not reaching all of our kids at K through Q, so we needed to put a different model in place. So we are looking, I sent this to the union to look at twice, I've not received any feedback. Again, this is not an administrative position, but it would be great if it was somebody who did have an administrative license, but it's really somebody who's trained in de-escalation and somebody who can help support the teachers if the building principal is dealing with the situation, or if the school adjustment counselors are working with other children.
Any questions for Jen?
When do you plan to post this position?
Well, we have to get it approved, and once we get it approved, we would be posting it.
So we'll be on our next agenda. Amy, can you go back to the agenda, please? There's no other questions, we'll move on to 2021 school year projected enrollment and school choice, again with Superintendent Waller.
So we've been working closely on projected enrollments, which is always difficult to do, and opening up school choice seats. The most important thing is we don't want to open up too many seats because the intent of school choice is to simply just fill the classrooms with the, with the teachers we already have. We don't want to take in too many students for our class sizes get too large. So with that said, we had to make some difficult decisions this year, and you'll notice that in some grades, we are not accepting any school choice students because we feel that our class sizes with the students that we have is already where we would like them to be. So if we added more school choices, it could bump our numbers up. Always, if people move into the town, there's always seats for them. If they move into Southwick, Tallinn, or Granville, they will always have a seat, but we do our best to keep our class sizes down. So if you look at the school choice, I do not have in front of me at this moment where they are, it's kind of hard for you to see. You will see that in grades two, grades four, grades five, grades six, we did not open up any seats for next year, and we only opened up grade 12 seats on an as-needed basis, and we come to you person by person for any students who have been with us that would like to remain here, but we don't typically accept any new students in grade 12 for just their senior year.
Your grandfather didn't write it once you start, correct? Like you, yeah, so, okay.
I see that we have five school choice slots to be available for seventh and eighth grade next year, which brings our number up in those grades to 127, which is just one behind our highest one, which was grade six, 128, where we chose not to open those seats. So I know that class sizes look different at the regional school versus Powder Mill. So my question was just that, you know, can we maintain a projected class size of 127 and keep our individual class sizes at, you know, under 25?
Yes, because they have world language, they have lots of other specials, they split up differently, there's different math classes, so the average class size is not just simply broken up into five or six teachers, but it's usually the class sizes in seventh and eighth grade is lower than 20.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, Amy, if you can go back to the agenda. Okay, up next is the policy, which we have no readings, so we'll move on to action items.
Move to approve change in athletic fees for the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year, beginning with the fall sports season. Ice hockey, $450 with a family household cap of $1,200 for winter season. Downhill skiing, $150. Cheerleading, $50. All other sports, $100 recommended.
Okay. Sorry, I had to unmute myself.
Second.
So I just had a question on that before we vote. I, you know, I know we've talked about this before, and I have no problems with this. I was just wondering how that the cap for ice hockey was arrived, how we arrived at that number.
I'm not sure, I don't know if Dave is on, I just know that for a household cap was $1,200. I'm not sure why, I don't know if he took it from other, Steve, do you know how we arrived at the cap of $1,200?
I do not know. I assume it was something Dave, Dave looked at, maybe in, based off of what other districts are doing.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Again, we're going to do a roll call vote on this. So Pam's up first. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
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 Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. Motion passes 700. Next action, Superintendent Waller.
Move to approve the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District's participation in the MECO program for the 2020-2021 school year recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Anyone have any questions?
I know that we asked about increasing our participation in this program, was that, was there any more talk of that? Probably not.
Jenny Sullivan is on the line, and I know she is working to see if we can increase our numbers for participation.
Great.
Ms. Sullivan is unmuted.
Those are as muted, Amy.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yep.
Okay, yes, we, we have big plans for doing more with the MECO grant, but unfortunately, just when we were getting started with conversations, we were sent into this recent upheaval, so we haven't been able to, to talk more about that, but I, what I'm anticipating is that as we settle into our remote learning plan going forward, we'll have more time to re-engage in those conversations in the upcoming weeks.
When I said probably not, that's exactly what I was thinking about. The question came at quite the time.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
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 Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. And the motion passes 700. Next action.
Move to accept generous donations in memory of Candace Most from Jerry Livin in the amount of $20. Boothby Therapy Services LLC in the amount of $100. Mark and Denise Fletcher in the amount of $100. Dennis Most in the amount of $25. Atachi Kusai Electric Co. Mark LLC in the amount of $50. And Co. Mark Social Club in the amount of $50 recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I did want to say that Candace Most was one of the first people in my childhood who stood out as being the friendliest and the sweetest, and one of those people that definitely make Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District so inviting and such a good community. So I was really excited to see these donations and thankful.
If there's no other questions, I'm going to go over to roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, for 700. Next action item, please.
Move to accept generous donation from the Brown family in the amount of $3,000 for the procurement of gaming workstations for the Southwick Regional School Esports League recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that?
I would just like to thank Jo and Heidi Brown for sending that letter. It, it gave me a new perspective and very impressed with the, the desire to build the, the devices that are necessary for this. So, so thank you for taking the time to write that letter to us in addition to the generous donation.
Other questions? We'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes for 700. Motion passes. And the last action item?
So I'm just going to give you a little bit of background information on this. There's, along with the commissioner updates, there's been a lot of discussion amongst superintendents and school districts regarding the remote learning plan I'm going to be talking about, and with that, do we take away April vacation so that there's no disruption just when we get things going, or do we keep April vacation? So, not a decision I made by myself, of course, I, you know, include all our stakeholders. So before I move forward, I did ask the union presidents to reach out to the teachers to see if, because it is a calendar change, would, would it be something that they were interested in? Our teachers were interested in removing the April vacation to keep students engaged for the month of April. So with that said, we asked our parents how our parents felt about it, and with an overwhelming response of our, and I, and I agree as a parent, our parents love our teachers and that they're hoping that we're back in school on May 4th, and that our kids can spend that additional week with our teachers. And I so hope that is the case. So we did not move to change April vacation. April vacation is going to stay as April vacation, but we did need to make two changes to the calendar. One of the changes was to move the quarter three, the marks are going to close on March 13th, and we also had to change kindergarten screening because it falls right around the time that we are going to be coming hopefully back to school. So we postponed that. So I'm going to move to approve the 2019-2020 district calendar revision 1.4 recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
So, yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So the teachers had voted to remove April vacation, but the parents did not. The parents were in favor of keeping April vacation, is that correct?
Yes, by an overwhelming majority.
Okay, and what kind of response did you get on that survey?
Amy, you had the, the numbers, but last I knew it was over 2,000, am I correct?
Yes, over 2,000.
Wow, okay. So what happens in, in the event that we don't go back?
Our last day of school would still be June 19th.
Okay, and my next question is, so I, that means that teachers and students are not expected to be doing any work that week, is that correct?
That is correct, nor on Good Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, I did have one more question. So we were eliminating the, the term three closure date. Did we have to add in a new term three closure date to extend it? Okay. Okay, I see it, okay, I didn't see it on my original one, I got it, okay.
Did you say? Yeah, go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, now, are we, are we taking, are, is the April vacation still there?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, I know there's a trip scheduled to Italy on that, that week.
Where?
Italy.
I don't think that's happening.
I don't think so.
It was Spain, and we canceled it.
No, this is, oh, this is next year.
Yes.
No, the calendar is this year, the current year.
Oh, this is the current year, okay, never mind.
So was it, was it mentioned what the, I, I didn't catch what the percentages were, quite honestly, I'm a little surprised, actually. I don't know where anybody's going, but...
Well, I think I was just as surprised. I thought overwhelmingly that we would, Amy, you can read the numbers out, I don't have access to it right now. If you give Amy a minute, she can pull up the survey.
Yeah, just let me pull it up.
Honestly, I'm ridiculously surprised myself.
I, I, I'm stunned. I, I really would have thought that it, it feel like we were just getting into a flow here, but I respect, you know, I respect the, the fact that we reached out to, you know, we reached out to the, to the parents, and if that's what, if that's what the results are, then, then so be it, which I think was an appropriate thing to do in this situation.
Yeah, the, um, the survey went out to every family in the district via our Blackboard Connect, the same method we've been using to contact families throughout the closure. We had 2,243 respondents. 1,510 of them said that they do not want to continue remote learning during April break.
That was, what was the number again, 1,005, something out of?
1,510.
Out of how many?
Um, we had 2,243 responses.
Wow, okay, well, that's, I guess...
Now, here's a question, you can submit a response more than once, do we have data on, like, repeat submissions?
No, we're not able to track that, but I watched the trend of the responses throughout the duration of the response period, and it was always the same.
Does, that, I assume it was still, it's, it's one per email address that it's sent to, though?
You could submit it multiple times.
Oh.
I submitted only once, but I thought about it.
Okay, we're going to move on to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
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 Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. Motion passes 7-0-0. Next section is reports. Superintendent Willard is up first.
So I, I don't have any commissioner updates. We were expecting to have phone calls with him every Friday. We did not have a phone call with him last Friday, but I just wanted to give you an update on the remote learning plans. We were able to get our remote learning plans out electronically. I can't remember if it was last Wednesday night or Thursday, which was a pretty quick turnaround from when the commissioner asked us to get these ready. The big difference between what we were doing and what we are doing now is he is giving professional judgment teachers, especially, he said at the high school level, who really, they were able to start teaching new content, which was not the direction we were giving when we first started with our extended closure. We were only allowed to do enrichment and review due to meeting the needs of our students with special needs, students with 504s. So he has cautioned us to go very slowly to make sure that if we are teaching new material, that we have the supports in place for all of our students. Our, the regional school created a plan that was inclusive of their paraprofessionals or special ed teachers and their content area. And they moved out a plan so that they're teaching one special and one content a day. The only one that is different is mathematics. The teachers really felt that they wanted to have contact with their kids daily because they felt that teaching math just didn't work on a one day a week model. The teachers have two hours of office time where students can reach out to them and the teachers will get back to them during the day. It's also during those two hours that our teachers can be teaching. Some of our teachers are doing Zoom. Every Monday, the expectations are going out to the parents and to students about what is expected for the week. We are trying to keep it simple for the sake of parents and for students so that they don't get overwhelmed at home. We're looking for some eye ready and every school's district remote plan, every school's remote learning plan is on our website. If you go to the district remote learning plan and you scroll to the bottom, all three of the schools' remote learning plans are at the bottom, which really breaks up and states exactly what students are expected to do for the week. If parents are having difficulty or not getting information, we're asking them to please reach out to the school because the school clerical staff is checking the phones all day and they're checking their emails. And parents should be getting a reply back within 24 hours to any questions that they have. We're just asking people to follow the same protocol. If you're having difficulty, first reach out to the teacher. Then if you can't resolve it, reach out to the building principal. I can tell you, I did ask Jenny Sullivan today, we had, we passed out our second round of computers today. So we've handed out an estimate of 230 student devices and 45 teacher devices. So in a short amount of time, we were able to get devices into the hands of our students who needed them. So we're extremely thankful to our IT department for the work that they've been doing to turn this around and to get these computers into our students' hands.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I guess I was thinking about what, in regards to this, um, it was really nice. I've combed through the remote learning plans and trying to support different people in my family. And I definitely feel like the ones that just came out are a lot more simplified. They're a little bit more, or less overwhelming. It was kind of a lot to balance all the new information coming in. And it's really appreciated how the, the teachers are sending out those like kind of little snappit or snippets at the beginning of the week, this is exactly what you need to do, or even helping you organize your day. It's definitely, if you think about, our kids weren't meant to go work from home, like they hardly can get through the day, sometimes in person, never mind online. So all of the help we can get with organizing them and transitioning is so thanked, thankful and, what was I going to say? Um, I'm also thinking about the messaging that goes on even from Desi with how we are sending out so much work and it's less now, but we're sending out work, but there are still children and families who are dealing with different hardships or who aren't able to access due to some kind of reason that is beyond our control or theirs. And thinking about the balance with that, I guess it's our role to supply and like to give this, these opportunities out, but thinking about what is their actual role at home and their responsibility.
So I think that really would depend on the grade level too, Chelsea. The independence level of the student. I can tell you that we have an admin meeting that it's been every day. This week, we are going to a Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And in our discussion on Monday, every principal was able to name what students that the teachers had not been able to connect with. And then the building principals have reached out to them to ask them what supports they need. And the number is extremely small. And we're doing everything we can to help the families during this time. I think that's one of the beautiful things about this school district is the size of it and the relationships. And I think in a time like this, these relationships are a key to keeping students engaged and letting kids know that we do care. We do see what they're doing and we're here to support them.
I'm so relieved to hear that we're reaching out directly to those families. I always get worried about the little, the underdog. Also, thinking about the idea of pass fail and what is like acceptable effort. It, will that be defined more as we go along?
So I can, I can tell you at the regional school, they're doing it based on engagement and looking to see if the students are actively engaging in the work. And it's, it's basically non-credit, um, direction that they're going in. So if the students are actively participating and working hard and doing everything that they can, then they're going to get credit for the class. They will not be getting a numeric grade for it because we're not in school. It's just not set up for that. But it's going to be, you can check their parent plus portal. If they did their homework for the week, they're going to be getting a check. So you know if, as a parent, if your student has, and your child has been engaged for the week and they're learning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, what is the participation rate up in Talon?
I don't know the exact answer to that. I do know that the students that they were concerned about, don't know if any of them were in Talon. I can find out for you, Ted.
All right.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
Just going back to my question, sorry, I'm still lingering on my thoughts. So if per se, our, because things are changing, people are potentially losing jobs either now or later or they're healthy now or they make it sick later. What if participation changes for a student going forward? And their role at home looks a lot different. So their participation in academics looks different.
That's all, that's all taken into account, Chelsea. It's all part of the guiding principles from the commissioner that we have to understand what is going on in every home right now. Everybody might be healthy, but God forbid something, you know, somebody in the family gets sick. That's why the communication piece is really important. And we just stay in contact with the family.
So it'll be, every child will be looked at individually?
Yes.
On their needs. All right.
Yes.
Hi, Chelsea. It's Jenny Sullivan. I just wanted to add to that. We specifically wrote into our district plan that principals and the district, if a student, if a teacher is choosing to fail a student, will take a look and see if there are any questions of equitable access. And if there are, we reserve the right to issue an incomplete and allow the student to reengage in the learning when we, we come back to normal in-person schooling.
Okay, and that's on the page that, that was on the document that's on the district website?
Correct, it's on.
Read through, but I'm overwhelmed with reading things. Sorry.
Sorry. It's on the district distance learning program plan and it is on the website.
All right. Thank you.
Am I correct that if we were to return to school, that fourth term would still remain a pass fail term?
We haven't gotten that information yet.
Sorry, I was on mute. Any last questions for the superintendent? Okay, moving on. Advance that to the next page. Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnel?
Sure. I don't really have much of a report here, but I did, and we may have touched on this at a previous meeting. The continuity of payments to employees, I thought that was something that we should at least get in front of you again. And not that we're looking for any formal action this evening on that, on that issue, but I did want to apprise you of what we're doing. The Commissioner of Education offered guidance early on for school districts across the state as to how we should be handling our employees, their compensation. There were also a lot of concerns over the tuition obligations that we have with the partner vocational and special education schools and programs that, that we're sending students to. The, the commissioner's guidance has been that we should, to whatever extent possible, continue or ensure continuity of payment for, for those employees and for the programs and schools that, that we have arrangements with, anticipating that we're, we're going to need those folks when the students do return to school, hopefully sooner as opposed to later. So I just wanted to make the committee aware that we are following that guidance presently. The guidance was issued, I will qualify it with this, that the guidance was issued at a time when there was a, basically a three-week shutdown. And they've maintained that guidance through the extended shutdown that we have right now. If something were to change and school was out, out of session for an even longer period of time, that, that practice of continuity of payment is obviously subject to change. And we'd consult with, with Destiny, we'd consult with the committee to see how, how we want to proceed with that. If there are concerns over this current practice, certainly you can reach out to the superintendent or me and we can have a conversation about it. As far as transportation outsourcing goes, I don't really have anything new to report. We're trying to get to defining the lease arrangement with the collaborative. But admittedly, I know that they're up to their eyeballs with some current issues. And we've been trying to address some of the more pressing needs. So I'm hopeful that in the next several days or certainly by the end of next week, that we've made some, a little more headway that we can report out at the, at the next meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve.
So, yeah. So Steve, that means like our food service workers, well, they're busy doing things as well too, but our transportation, who, who else are we making sure is doing okay right now?
So what's, what's happening as this situation has evolved, there are some people who are extremely busy. And there are other folks who certainly have less work than, than they might typically have, although we're trying to find as many ways to engage them as possible. So just based on some advisories that have come out this week, or actually last week, we've gone to a, a much more skeletal crew with custodians, but on a rotating basis. Again, trying to limit the amount of time that, that these folks are, are out of their, their, their home or their shelter area. Food service workers, some, some of the food service workers are not, are not involved in the food distribution process that we're having right now for, for a variety of reasons. But we then, but we also have some folks who are, who are working Monday through Friday in this meal distribution process. We're looking for ways to scale that back to, for less frequency where they're coming in contact with, even with their coworkers, despite whatever attempts at safe social distancing that we're making. You know, IT has been, as Jen pointed out earlier, has been extremely busy. You know, there's really, with the exception, I would say, our, our transportation folks are, probably have the less, the least amount of engagement. We are looking at some, some things we can do with them as far as training. It's hard to do things under the current environment where if they're non-essential personnel and, and their, and their job really involves physical presence in order to, to do it, it's tough to come up with alternative tasks for them, aside from maybe some professional development and training that could be done remotely. So that's kind of where some of the things that we're, we're doing with those employees that are not in the teaching ranks, per se.
Thanks. I'm glad to hear that we're taking care of our, our people. I'm not as concerned about making sure that people are pulling their own weight, per se, right now. We're all in quite, quite the pandemic. So it's good to hear we can take care of our people now and they'll be there for us when we need them.
I think that's what you'll find that if, if not all, certainly the vast majority of school districts across the, across the state are doing right now. Again, I do qualify that with the guidance was received during a period of time when, and not that I expect it to change, but it was, the guidance was offered at a time when we were looking at a, a shorter school closure period than we're looking at right now. I'm hopeful that we can continue to do this as long as it takes. But I do recognize there may be some pressures that, that creep up or there may be a different guidance that, that comes forth from the state. And we'll, we'll deal with that accordingly when it, when it comes, if it comes.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, moving on to subcommittees. Up first is negotiations. Do we have any dates set at all at this point for them?
No. Really, right now, I don't even know how we would do it with the social distancing.
Good point. Finance Subcommittee?
Can we not do that work virtually?
Negotiations?
Or at least, oh, yeah, not, or was there any prep work? I can't remember where we leapt off at this point on some of our.
Yes, Chelsea. We haven't done any negotiations with anybody since our last negotiation Subcommittee meeting.
Right. Okay. I didn't know if there was any, some behind the scenes or prep work before going back and forth that would really help or not. We'll just wait.
For finance, this is Jess. Steve, do you want me to take that one?
Sure, Jess. That's fine.
So we met and went through our OPEB liability valuation. It's unfortunately increased since our last valuation, but we did talk through how It's unfortunately increased since our last valuation, but we did talk through how we anticipate paying for that, and we don't anticipate any new monies being contributed, despite the fact that the valuation has gone up, so that was the positive thing. We anticipate in like a 15, 10 to 15-year window that our liability on the pension side is going to significantly decrease because we'll be caught up at that point, which will allow us to then contribute further to our OPEB liability, and it seems to be in line with what some other districts are considering, but that was the discussion around the OPEB liability. And then Steve just talked about the continuity of payments to employees and vendors based on the Commissioner's guidance. Steve, I don't know if you have anything additional to mention to the committee with regards to the response to the Granville Finance Committee letter?
I I don't, I have a partially constructed draft. I did email Mr. Streeter, the town manager or administrative assistant to the Select Board in in Granville, that I apologize for the delay, and said that we should have something for your consideration, for the committee's consideration review before sending it off to to the Granville Finance Committee soon. So I didn't want him to think that we forgot forgot about them, but it's just been such a a fluid situation and so many things to try to deal with that are ultra-time sensitive.
Great. The Athletic Booster Club had submitted a proposal to take over the motocross parking event, and the concern from the Finance Subcommittee was that it potentially leaves out other clubs or members of the regional school that would otherwise be participating. So we were going to confirm back if that was the intention, and if so, if we were excluding people, that we were not in favor of that. Steve, I don't know if there's been any further discussion around that?
No, nothing since since our meeting.
Okay. And I think that's all we got to, right?
Yeah, there were a few other items on the agenda, but we I don't think we were able to get to those.
Okay. Any questions on any of that?
Our next scheduled meeting is the regular monthly meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions for Policy Subcommittee? I mean, sorry, Finance Subcommittee? Okay, LPV, Board of Directors?
No, LPV EC is has currently is not meeting at this point in time. There is some feedback in the background, I'm not sure what we're hearing, so.
It could be me, I'm gonna change my location, I've got too many people in the house.
Also, Jeff, if you could speak up a little bit louder, when you are speaking, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
Does anyone need me to repeat anything?
No, we heard you, Jess.
Okay.
Okay, LPVC Board of Directors has not met. Policy Subcommittee, you folks are gonna have an online meeting?
Next week we'll meet. I also wanted to think about with all of our online learning, just checking in and thinking about, well, the synchronous learning and making sure that our digital policies can support that, or just keeping that in mind if we check through our policies when we meet, maybe.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds has not met since we've last met. ILT has not met since we've last met. Any other Subcommittee have any other update? Okay, now it is time for our second public comment. We'll have Amy check the superintendent email address along with the chat and Q and A, and if you provided your name and address, we will be reading your public comment. As a reminder, the public comment rules applies, and we do not get into any back and forth over public comment.
Okay, Chairman Hou, I'll start with a public comment from the question and answer. I have a few public comments from Dominica Noonie, 42 Lakeview Street in Southwick. Her first comment is, can you give a status to the SOA Act from Destiny? Dominica Noonie, 42 Lakeview Street, second comment, why would we increase MECO but decrease school choice? Next public comment, Dominica Noonie, 42 Lakeview Street in Southwick. For remote learning, do you have a plan for when parent guardian gets sick? How to maintain and support education for those families? Was it in the, I think that's a 14-page document, if so, which page? Dominica Noonie, 42 Lakeview Street, does your remote learning plan have a transition back to school plan built in some component, if so, what what page? Dominica Noonie, 42 Lakeview Street, can't you put out a public, I think that's supposed to be bid, to run the parking lot and then vote? And then we have another public comment from Jay Jones in Granville. Just looking for a recap here, in this meeting, our district, which is already behind the standards of the state and other surrounding districts, has just disguided that if school doesn't return to session this spring, students will be advanced to grade level based on participation alone, no metric or means of testing appropriate grade level knowledge. Not only are we concerned with how much further this will potentially set us fine behind, but rather, in the same meeting, have also decided to keep our week of vacation from participation for a week in April. That concludes the public comments that I see in the question and answer. Moving to the chat. I don't see names and addresses attached to these public comments, Chairman Hou?
I see one.
There's Chairman Hou.
Yes.
I don't see any names and addresses attached to the chat comments. I do see one, Veronica Stratton, 30 West Heartland Road in Granville. I wanted to thank everyone for their hard work and support for the children. We have somebody asking to read a comment from above, I'm not sure.
Unclear which one we're referring to here.
Yeah. And then I do have a comment from Ms. Burnt, sent me an email, which I did respond to. She mentioned that she's having difficulty hearing Mr. Hou.
Oh, everybody is.
Yeah, he sees the comments and he's trying to fix that technical difficulty.
So there's a name and an address provided, but it is separate from a public comment that apparently was made above.
I have 11 McCory Drive, Michelle Perro. Well, the new position to address the significant social emotional needs of our students also address bullying. Why do we borrow policies from other districts? Are we unable to create our own? Also, since there are no more school choice spots, does that mean we will no longer be taking students who are expelled from other districts?
Amy, you said you had an email?
We should check email as well.
I don't have any email, I told you I had one from Ms. Burnt, and her comment was simply that she was having a difficult time hearing Mr. Hou. If you would like me to read the email verbatim, I can.
Well, I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to committee discussion, old business.
So. I I have something. I just got a email from the town secretary, and the annual town meeting in Tylon has been moved to Monday, June the 1st.
Thank you for that update.
And that and that will be rain or shine, or virus or not. That's a firm date.
So I have something else that I'd like to say, I don't know whether it falls under new business or old business, but I've been sitting here the entire time feeling very unsettled about the vote that we made about the 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 April vacation in the calendar. I know that the teachers voted overwhelmingly to continue teaching through April vacation. They felt that, you know, we are just starting this new learning plan, we're just starting fourth term. Kids are just starting to learn how to manage what remote learning looks like, and that taking a break from it would be a disruption at this point in time. I understand that you had different results from parents, but I I can't help but feel that 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 may not be a reliable source of data, simply because in reading the comments and and things that we've seen in question and answer, that I think that there were many parents that were not aware of this survey, and I just don't feel comfortable making a decision, maybe it's too late because I already have, based on what I I think might be unreliable data. And if I'm understanding it correctly, the thought in the parents' responses was that if we do go back to school, then we want that extra week of FaceTime with our teachers. And I totally understand that, and I totally support that. So my question is, and again, it may be too late since we already voted it, but can we do something like if we don't return to school, we work through April vacation? But if we do return to school, we have April vacation? Now, obviously, that's dependent on a decision from the state within the next week or two. I guess I just needed to express my discomfort with that decision.
And and I can assure you that I I have asked everybody else from one of the another superintendent who sits on the board. He says that I I was going to put that motion forward, however, he says he's not anticipating getting anything before April vacation. Now, again, he says he has no inside information, but he does sit on a lot of the boards at the state level, and I I think we're in a no-win situation because as a parent and as an educator, we always want our kids in front of teachers as opposed to just another, you know, week of online learning. I can also understand where the teachers are coming from, where we're just getting them started, and now we're gonna take a break. I can understand all sides of this, I don't think there's, um, I think if we had all the answers, it would be easy to make this decision, but without the absence of all this information.
I just see how hard it's been to make this transition, and I I just hate to to backpedal and then have to try to get the kids engaged and participating all over again, it's 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 a challenge.
Quite the challenge, for sure. I would have to say that now that we're bringing it up, this was one of my most uncomfortable votes, I think, on the board so far. I I, before this vote was made up, that I really wanted for us to keep going through April vacation. I have no inside insight, but I watch the news every day, and I hear about how our the peak is coming later here than it is in other places, and I just don't foresee it being likely that we potentially will have a lot of time left at the end of the school year, to any time left at the end of the school year. And I do go back and forth between what our teachers want and need to get it done, but and what's good for our kids based off of their parent's survey results. So I also was uncomfortable with that, but I just don't know what is the best answer, I guess.
We could always put out another survey and figure out a way where people can only respond once to it, I'm not quite sure how to do that.
Folks, with all due respect, we don't have another board meeting before the next, before that vacation. We don't know what the state is going to do, right now we know we're out through the 4th of of May. We voted on this. When Jen gave her presentation, she gave you the best information to make a decision on, and we made a decision this evening. We need to move on. Any other old business? Okay, new business. Amy's gonna be sending out an email with the link for the superintendent evaluation to each of your email addresses. I'd appreciate if everybody took within the next two weeks to complete that survey, so that we can get the results compiled and put together a report for one of the upcoming school board meetings. And then lastly, we need to come up with a meeting date for April. In the event we need to change the budget based on things that we discussed earlier, that we have enough time to make any last-minute changes to that budget. Jen or Amy, do you have proposed dates?
I do, I was wondering if we could do it the Tuesday of April vacation.
Does anybody have any conflicts with the 21st? Okay, if there's no conflicts, then Amy will post the meeting for the 21st.
Okay.
Any other new business items? During non-no, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We'll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Jonathan? Yeah, I'm mute, Jonathan. Maria?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.